Yeah, we're good. Uh, welcome council staff, uh, those joining us on YouTube channel for today's committee of the whole meeting, which is virtual. Um, I'll call the call to order the meeting, uh, just before we do get into it. Just wanna, uh, with our support for the Terry Fox Foundation, uh, council and staffer are all wearing their T-shirts, uh, just to further, uh, Sunday is the Terry Fox Run. So we encourage everyone to try and get out to do their walk and, uh, support the, uh, Terry Fox, uh, run. So that being said, thank you, council staff for supporting the, uh, foundation. So I'll move to approval of the agenda, the resolution that the committee of the whole agenda for September 10th, 2025 be approved. I have a move by the mayor, seconded by councillor Lashapell. All those in favor? And that is carried. Uh, disclosure of interest. Any member have a disclosure of interest? Not seeing any, uh, should something happen to come out, you can get ahold of the clerk, uh, right after the meeting. Uh, presentations, uh, today we have Kate Wa, the executive director of Child and Youth Advocacy, Centre Simcoe Muskoka Refunding Request. Um, see, we do have Kate here. So welcome, Kate. Um, councillor didn't get your presentation, so I'll turn it over to you. So welcome.
Well, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to present to you today and share the work we do at the CYAC. I'm just gonna share my screen with you. There we go. Perfect. So first of all, um, again, thank you for letting me present to you today. And we are humbly requesting money from you and we're going through all the municipalities to seek funding for this Child and Youth Advocacy Centre of Simcoe Muskoka. I'm not sure if many of you have heard of us or some of you have. I know, uh, for myself, one of our big pushes right now is to make sure that the public knows that we exist and they have a right to use our centres. And so even just getting the word out there and having you there, understanding it and sharing the information is absolutely fabulous as well. And I'm not clicking directly. Here we go. So our mission at the CYAC is we provide a safe space and a specialized care team for children, youth and their families when they have experienced violence, exploitation or abuse of any nature. So what happens is using a trauma-informed approach, when the, there's been suspected child abuse or neglect or, um, exploitation, then the police or Child Protection Services, they call us. They set up the, we set up the centre for them and they conduct their investigations at our centre. This means that we can offer wraparound supports for the kiddos and their families. It is a child-friendly, friendly place. It's better than going to a cool police station. We have therapy dogs and facility dogs that are trained to give comfort and sit with the kiddos during the investigation. State-of-the-art forensic recording equipment, which means that the child never has to tell their story more than once. One of the rights of all victims in Canada is to not be re-traumatized by the investigation process. And that's exactly what we provide here. We want to make sure that every child's voice is heard and they have an opportunity to, to share their story, be believed, which is one of the number one things that kiddos that come through our centre, um, express the concern of. So we serve all of Simcoe Muskoka, which you know is a very large region. Um, in all told, we work with sixteen different police detachments. And we work with all the Child Protection Services and Indigenous agencies across the region, as well as all of the community referral partners. So we have an MOU with New Path. Um, we work closely with the Regional Centre for Suspected Child Abuse and Neglect. We actually have a medical, um, room that they use in one of our centres so that we can serve as many people as possible. We have two brick and mortar locations. One is in Barry, one is in Orillia. And then we have a mobile unit because the region is so vast. We know that we don't want travel to be a barrier for families to receive this kind of support. So we have, um, a vehicle that was donated. We have mobile recording equipment. We'll pack up the dogs and snacks and toys and whatever else is needed and an advocate and head out to be able to meet the families wherever the police, it's a better place for them to be able to meet. So they don't have to worry about traveling. Um. I just wanted to show you a quick, and this is why the, I couldn't send the whole, the video wouldn't download properly for everyone. But this is a video I wanted to show you that we just recently made with a grant that we got from Justice Canada. Um, it's to be sent to the families before they come. If there's time, a lot of times it's very sensitive and it's a 12 hour and we've got to get them in as fast as possible. But if there's time, we like to send this out, especially if kiddos are resistant or scared or nervous. If kids are on the spectrum or have any other mental health issues, then this video was created so that they would know what they were coming into. The narrator that you're going to see here is actually a kiddo that came through our centre. So just to give an understanding of, uh, an actual story. So Valeria came to us at thirteen years old with, um, disclosing child abuse or a sexual abuse. She met with, uh, the investigators. She has now gone, she's going through the court process and we now serve families from the point of disclosure all the way to the end of court. She has become a massive advocate for change and for telling her story and telling the story in the CYAC. And in fact, the Canadian Centre for Child Protection says that they've done studies and when, when survivors become advocates, the healing becomes even greater. Because of our experience with Valeria, we started a whole youth ambassador program and a whole youth advisory team. I mean, it makes more sense that the youth are informing us. Um, we work with kiddos, um, from zero to twenty-four. So this is Valeria and this is her letting everybody know who we are at the CYAC. Please let me know if there's any sound issues. Sorry.
Hey, I heard you come to visit us. The Child and Youth Advocacy Centre of Simcoe Muskoka is a place where caring professionals come together to support kids, youth and families. The CYAC SM is a safe space where you get to tell your story to police officers and child protection workers. We meet lots of kids here for many different reasons. Here, come in. When you get here, you'll be welcomed by one of our friendly team members. They'll tell you what will happen while you're here and introduce you to another safe adult to talk to. Let me show you around so you know what to expect. You'll explore one of our rooms, sit in our cozy chairs, talk about being healthy and safe. We even have snacks for you. While you're talking, we collect and record information using cameras to help keep things accurate. One of our facility dogs will be there to snuggle with you and provide comfort as you share your story. At the same time, we will meet with your caregiver to see if they need any resources. If you ever want to talk more about your feelings later, we offer counselling services to help. We also run fun and engaging groups for young people who want to learn more about staying safe. If coming to us isn't possible, we can even come to you. Our mobile unit allows us to bring a dog, camera and some snacks for you to tell your story in a place close to where you live.
At the CYAC, we want to make sure that everyone gets the help they need so they can start feeling better. We work with a whole team of professionals and you might see some of us while you're here. We want to make sure that you feel safe, supported and cared for while at our centre.
Sometimes it takes a lot of courage to go to a new place and meet new people. Remember, it's normal and okay to feel nervous, excited or both. No matter what you're feeling, you have the team at the CYC to support you.
So we offer a lot of programs. Um, basically being a grassroots nonprofit organization, we are, well, we don't have, uh, a lot of funding. What we do have is the ability to see when there's a need and be able to respond to it if possible. So we have our advocacy work, which is when a family comes in for an investigation. We connect them to all the community referral partners. That might be food security, that might be, um, talking to their school. That might be connecting them to mental health agencies, whatever they need. And we will follow those families as long as they want our support and, and connect with them. We noticed that one of the biggest issues in our area is a lot of people are sitting on, uh, wait lists for mental health. And we know that if you are seen within the first sixty days of an incident, then your chances of having complex PTSD and other issues are far, far reduced. So we started our own counselling program and we have an in-house councillor. We make sure it's not duplicating basically all those people that fall through the cracks. So for instance, there's not a lot of counselling programs for caregivers on how to support their child after a disclosure. Or it might be that it wasn't verified or it wasn't chargeable. And then that also neglect, that, that negates them from some other, um, agencies. So that's why we've started our own. We do a prevention education program for young girls called Common Ground. We teach them about, uh, healthy relationships, boundaries, how to stay safe online. And we're currently, um, developing one for boys. Um, and then we now have the Child Victim Witness Support Program, which has been running in Simcoe Muskoka for seventeen years. But it was under an umbrella of a Toronto agency and we've just had the Ministry of the Attorney General give us the program so that it's seamless, like I said, from disclosure to the end. And then again, we have our wonderful facility dogs, which make life fabulous in the office. The reality is that we know child abuse is a major, major concern, a major, major issue. It happens in our backyard. In fact, sixty-seven percent of all human trafficking cases in Canada happen from Toronto to Thunder Bay. So that's our four, our four hundred corridor. So this is happening right in our backyard. It is absolutely essential that we are meeting the needs of these kiddos and supporting them. Our region, we have done a lot of outreach. We work really hard. We're not mandated yet. And please know that we are lobbying the government with a nationwide CYAC initiative to make us mandated. Our model is, uh, it comes out of, uh, Europe called the Barna House Model. It is nationally, an internationally recognized model. It is mandated to be essential service in the Europe and it's an essential service in the United States. Canada is just kinda getting there. So, um, we're, we're working very hard on that. But what we're noticing is that we are exponentially growing and having, um, many, many more investigations coming through our centre. I don't think that's necessarily that there's a massive increase, except for online exploitation has exploded. It's more that the word is getting out there and people are, are recognizing that they can come to this centre. And also I think a lot more people are being educated about disclosures and how to recognize abuse and how to respond appropriately. So we also are going into the schools and teaching teachers how to recognize signs of, um, abuse so that they're able to support the kiddos. I mean, they're the, I was a teacher, so I'm very, very aware that they were the frontline workers here. So are, we have an urgent need for sustainable funding. We, I write a grant a week. Um, we do fundraising. We do everything we possibly can to keep our doors open. Um, and what we're looking for is to find a way so that we have some funding throughout our region so that it's not, um, so that we, so that we're able to keep these doors open. So that we're able to offer hope and healing to these families when they've gone through one of the most tragic experiences of their lives. Um, we do work all over Tay Township and with the OPP and all of the areas. And so that is why we are respectfully requesting this $10,000 to begin annually. And like I said earlier, we are going around and making, and, and speaking to everyone we can. A, like I, to get the message out there, but also to see if the municipalities throughout our region can help support us to stay open. The fact of the matter is, is that a kiddo who's experienced, uh, violence has three paths ahead of them. The first path is that they, um, have a chance for healing and to be, um, contributing members of our society and happy, healthy people. The second path is that they, uh, we are revictimized. And the third path is that they become offenders themselves. So we're here to be that first path and we are asking for your help to be able to keep that going. And I think, I think that's it. Is there any questions for me that I can help answer? I'm very bad at following a presentation, so.
Well, thanks, Kate. That's great. Uh, you know, just making the public awareness of your organization is just great. I know I do have a couple of, uh, questions, but, uh, what I'll do, I'll turn to council to see if other members have any questions. Um, I'm just waiting for Katie to take, uh, the presentation down so I can see other.
Oh, that'd be me. Here, let me do that. Yeah, I think it's me to stop sharing.
There we.
There we go.
Well, that's great. Okay, we have councillor Raymond.
Good morning, Kate. Thank you for your presentation. Very informative. A couple of questions I have. Number one is, do you have any numbers as far as how many Tay families, um, are affected? I know your support request is, uh, to provide for fifteen Tay families each year. Do we, do we, are we running at that number now or is that just something?
No, you're about, it's about ten to fifteen a year that we will get from the Tay township area. One of, um, we, our mobile unit, we've really been, we've been going around to all the platoon briefings at seven o'clock in the morning and making sure all the officers know that we have the mobile. One of the issues has been that people think they have to get the families to Barry or Orillia. So that has, um, increased the awareness and now more OPP that are in these, uh, remote regions are using our services. So, um, that, I mean, yours, it's a, it's a smaller township, but there's obviously need for it everywhere.
Right. And my other question had to do with, uh, our school system for both, uh, the younger kids as well as the older kids. How do you guys interact with the schools? Because a lot of times I understand that, uh, the first notices, uh, come out through the school system. So are they working with you? Are you integrated together that way?
We are working on that. So I was actually a teacher with the, uh, separate board for twenty-two years. So we are all in the separate board because people, I, it was easy for me to make sure that the right people knew that this agency existed. I didn't even know we existed and I was special education, working in, um, Angus and some other areas where we had a lot of issues and I had no idea. So that was my first, my first, uh, you know, big wake-up call about what's out there and how people don't know it's there. So we are now delivering in services to teachers. Um, so they have their PD day at the end of, uh, September and we're going in and we do how to recognize, respond and report signs of child abuse. We've also, some of the, when schools are doing, um, health fairs, then we, uh, sign up for as much as we can and we'll go on in and do little presentations to, you know, like starting with grade one. Have, have a buddy system when you go out and what does that look like? Um, so we are working with them. The, from my personal belief and, and studies have shown, the more we can train teachers and work with the parents and the administration, the better. Because me going into a gym and teaching a whole, and then walking away, I, that person that they've then connected with about this issue is gone. I need their teachers to be the ones that can respond to it. So yes, agreed, extremely important. And it's a, it's something that we're working on.
Okay, great. Thanks very much for the, the answers. So thank you, deputy mayor.
Thanks councillor Raymond. Now, is there any other, uh, uh, Mayor Walker?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, a couple of questions. I'm always concerned about duplication, uh, in services because we get a number of requests. Uh, we, we are a huge supporter of Waypoint. Um, I'm just wondering what, um, what difference do you provide that Waypoint, uh, doesn't provide?
So we will refer to Waypoint. We, we're the hub, where the, the investigation starts with us. So we, uh, uh, the public can't, uh, initiate us. It has to be police or child protection, unless it's one of our alternative programs. But the police, as the second there's going to be an investigation, they come to us. That's not being done at Waypoint. We work with Waypoint. We work with all the community referral partners. It, our, our purpose is that the system is quite fragmented and difficult to navigate. Um, and so we're there to help the families navigate the system. In fact, we've looked at changing the name from, it's nationally advocacy centres. But I feel we're more of a navigator a lot of time and that makes a lot more sense to people when I'm explaining it. But we, I agree absolutely, worship. We do not want to duplicate services. Um, but there's definitely enough for all of us to do and we're always working. We hold meetings with the multidisciplinary team. So everyone in Simcoe Muskoka is invited. We hold them at the different centres so that we can all just look at how can we work together to best serve the families in Simcoe Muskoka.
Okay. Um, how long have you, how long has your organization been in existence?
So, uh, the, in Simcoe Muskoka, we've been here for ten years.
Okay. I just wonder, but the, 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 the ask for, for funding, um, why is that suddenly a need? Is there other sources of funding that have depleted? Or is it because of the caseload or staffing?
So that's, it's, it's all of those things. Um, one being that we have moved from, um, serving about two hundred, uh, families a year to about four hundred. We're actually this year alone, we're only ha, um, a third of the way through our fiscal and we're at fifty percent of our investigations. So the use of the centre, the need is growing exponentially. Um, due to the, um, issues, like the changes in government, there was a lot of, uh, grants that went on hold and then haven't been fulfilled this year. Um, there's not as many coming out. And also I've only been here for six months. So I really wanted to look at how to diversify our funding and so that we're not beholden. The, the problem with grants are, and they're lovely, but they like net new projects. They like to fund, um, materials and they, like, you know, they don't like salary. They don't like overhead, you know, those things, they can't advertise that they funded. They don't find it as exciting. And then I'm also tied to a massive amount of reporting, which is fine and I can do that. But the issue is I have to pay my clinical councillor. I have three buildings now for rent, which we're renovating a building with family connections, uh, so that we can have, uh, everybody under one roof to try to reduce more costs. But there's, the costs are growing. Our rent has, has terribly increased. Um, and the funding hasn't increased in any way, shape or form.
Okay. With respect to the amount that you're requesting from us, what will you be requesting from our neighboring municipalities? Will it be the same amount?
For this, for smaller municipalities, absolutely. So we just presented at the Springwater Township and they've agreed to $10,000 a year, uh, for, and they've given us a two-year commitment. Um, when it comes to, Orillia already has, has been a great funder. They give us $45,000 a year. Um, Barry, I'm going for a heck of a lot more. I mean, we serve a lot of Barry communities. Um, so it just depends on the region and what I've been doing is pulling all the stats together about how many kids, how many people we serve in that area to make it make sense.
Okay. Okay, yeah, uh, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, deputy mayor.
Thanks, uh, Mayor Walker. Any other questions from council? Um, just check them, counsel Talbot, so okay. Well, thank you, Kate. Um, I do have a couple of quick questions, but I did see Scott there with his lapdog. It's an awful big lapdog he's got.
Hi, everybody. I'm, I'm the program manager at the CYAC and this is Beacon, one of our facility dogs. This is our Barry dog.
Thanks, Scott.
She's literally trained to sit on you on the couch.
Part of her training.
Yeah.
So Kate, don't mind my ignorance. I've never heard of your organization before and I think it's great that, uh, as I said, you know, making this aware. I was always under the impression Children's Aid, Aid Society. That's what I remember. Is there a difference here or are you under that umbrella or maybe you can explain that?
We work with, so, uh, CAS or Children's Aid, it's, we, it, there's all kinds of names, right? Sometimes it's Child Protection Services, sometimes it's Children's Aid Society. So in our region, it's Family Connections. That's their name. So they've changed their name. Um, I, I'm sure you understand that there's a lot of resistance to CAS. So they're really working on how to connect with families in a different way. So we work with them. So there's a joint protocol in Ontario that police and child and CAS have to do investigations together. Again, the purpose is that they don't have to repeat their story over and over, the, the kiddos that are disclosing, disclosing. So we work so closely with them that when we were looking for a new location, because we need to expand, um, we are moving into the Family Connections building and they are working with us on how to renovate it and make it cost-effective because they consider us such an essential service and such an essential partner to their work. We, and especially with police, we also make their job easier. So we do all the follow-up. We do all the connections. We keep everybody, child, the child protection worker, the police officer, the family, the whoever else connected and, and do that legwork so that they can do the work that they need to do.
Thanks for the explanation, Kate, and you're absolutely correct. Children's Aid Society, that was where everybody ran. So I can understand now where you're coming in with the new, uh, terminology. Just on funding, um, you kind of highlighted some of that. Why is the province not, uh, funding you a hundred percent?
That is a fabulous question and, uh, something that we are really, really working hard on. Um, when it comes to the court support program, they, there is core funding that comes from it. Um, not anywhere near what the program actually costs to run. Uh, but we, we are a nationally, so a national organization just, uh, became an official organization this year. And the number one strategic priority for it is to allow be the government. Because like I said, in a lot of other places in the world, this is mandated. And in some provinces, so in Alberta, there's a lot more core funding from the province that goes to their CYACs. Um, but as it stands right now, at the, um, Doug Downey is fabulous and he's, he's really a huge supporter of us and is trying to get more work, more, um, funding for us. But as it stands right now, it's just based on a grant by grant basis.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation. I'm sure we can, uh, throw some daggers out there.
Yeah, that would be fabulous. And we have some information that we can send to you that is, that our national organization put together, just explaining to the provincial, to the province for people to hand out and share that here's, you know, the return on investment when you invest into a CYC and, and, and stats like that.
Great. Thanks, Kate. So the only other thing I have, like I know, because we're dealing with Muskoka, Simcoe County and Gray Bruce, have you approached the upper tier governments on this?
We have not and we are trying to. So if you have any way of helping us get in there, that would be fabulous.
Well, I know me and the mayor said on county, so I'm sure we can put, uh, a word in there.
We, we send emails and only some of you have responded to us. So we're, and I get it. There's a lot of asks out there and there's a lot of needs, so.
Couldn't agree more with you. Well, thank you, Kate. Uh, it was great. Um, you know, just the awareness on, uh, your organization is great. Uh, council will consider your request and, uh, but anyhow, good luck and, uh, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, Scott.
Bye.
Okay, moving along. We'll go to item five, Protective and Development Services. And I'll turn it over to councillor Raymond.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Welcome everybody to the Protective and Development Services portion of this meeting. Before I get underway, I just wanted to send a shout out to Mercy of Erin. Um, I was not at the last meeting and I see that August 25th, she's transitioned to the role of building inspector and plans examiner. So congratulations and, uh, looking forward to your assistance there. Uh, I know five point one, PDS twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, manager of planning and development services rezoning by law amendment. One seven nine John Street, twenty twenty-five dash ZBA dash zero nine, Mr. Weatherall, anything further to add?
Thank you, Chair Raymond. Uh, nothing further to add. Happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Uh, I have a recommendation moved by councillor Lashapell, seconded by councillor Talbot. That item PDS twenty twenty-five dash zero three three dated September tenth, twenty twenty-five, regarding a zoning bylaw amendment for one seven nine John Street be received and that the property identified as one seven nine John Street be rezoned from the village commercial exception five C one star five zone to the village commercial eleven C one star eleven zone to permit three dwelling units contained within a main dwelling. And that the appropriate bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration at its next council meeting. Uh, can open the floor for any questions or comments from anybody? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Technology guru still uses paper. Item five point two, PDS twenty twenty-five dash zero three four, manager of planning and development services rezoning by law amendment. Twenty eight fifty-five Old Fort Road. Mr. Weatherall, anything to add on this file?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further to add.
Very good. I have a recommendation moved by councillor Baumstead, seconded by councillor Larmann. That item PDS twenty twenty-five dash zero three four dated September tenth, twenty twenty-five, regarding a zoning bylaw amendment for two eight five five Old Fort Road be received and that the property identified as two eight five five Old Fort Road be rezoned from the neighbourhood commercial C two zone to the rural exception sixteen RU star one six zone to permit the three dwelling units contained within a main dwelling and that the appropriate bylaw be brought forward. that the appropriate bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration at its next council meeting. Open it up to the floor for any questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the vote, all those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Item five point three, PDS twenty-two-five dash zero-three-two, Planning Technician Re- Request to Remove Property from Heritage Register, two-two-five-eight Reeves Road. Ms. Bremner, Bremmer, sorry, anything further to add to this?
Thank you Chair, nothing further to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Uh, I have a recommendation moved by Deputy Mayor and seconded by His Worship. That item PDS twenty-two-five dash zero-three-two dated September tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Regarding a request to remove two-two-five-eight Reeves Road from the Heritage Register be received and the council direct staff to move forward with option A to remove two-two-five-eight Reeves Road from the Heritage Register as outlined within item PDS two-oh-two-five dash thirty-two. Opening to the floor for any comments or questions? Seeing none, we're having an easy evening, uh, day today, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Uh, moving right along, five point four, PDS twenty-two-five dash three-one, Manager of Municipal Law Enforcement Services Remonthly Activity Report, June to August twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Velcourt, anything further to add?
Thank you Chair, nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, I have a recommendation moved by Counselor Ta- Talbot, seconded by Counselor LaChappelle. That item twenty, PDS twenty-two-five dash three-one dated September tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Regarding the Monthly Activity Report, Municipal Law Enforcement Services, June, July and August twenty-twenty-five be received. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Item five point five, PDS twenty-two-five dash zero-three-five, Manager of Building Services, CBO, Remonthly Activity Report. June to August twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Craig, anything further to add to your report?
Uh, thank you through the Chair, uh, nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Uh, I have a recommendation moved by Counselor Larmont, seconded by Counselor Baumstead, that I am PDS twenty-two-five dash zero-three-five dated September tenth, twenty-twenty-five, regarding the Monthly Activity Report. Building Services Division, June, July and August twenty-twenty-five be received. Any questions or comments? In the floor. Seeing none, call for the vote, all those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. And our last item on this part of the agenda, PDS twenty-two-five dash zero-two-eight. General Manager Protective and Development Services Fire Chief, CEMC, Remonthly Activity Report, June to August twenty-twenty-five. Chief, anything further you'd like to let us know?
Thank you Mr. Chair, nothing further to add.
Okay, great. I have a recommendation moved by His Worship, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. That item PDS twenty-two-five dash zero-two-eight dated September tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Regarding the Monthly Activity Report, General Manager Protective and Development Services Fire Chief, CEMC, June and, June, July and August be received. Any comments or questions? Your Worship, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, just, just a question, I've had a lot of people ask me what the status of the uh, rescue boat is, have, have you heard anything further Chief, as far as where, where they're at with this or?
Through the Chair, they, they have uh, a supplier that is willing to construct the vessel as the same specs they originally seen from Russia. Uh, the individual has a facility just north of Perry Sound and apparently a hull has been started. So I don't foresee that we'll see it this winter. However, the manufacturer has offered that we could use a smaller vessel of similar construction to do training on over the winter.
Good, good, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, Counselor LaChappelle, please go ahead. Counselor LaChappelle, please go ahead.
I'm trying to hear, my thing went dead on me, just on that, uh, as Mayor Walker, I just a couple of questions of inquiries to Mr. Amer. I'm assuming before anything's in operation, this gets approved by Small Crafts and Harbor. They are the regular areas of which goes on to the boat, so I'm just curious, does that will become part of the process or we just gonna have something that may not necessarily meet the specs that is required by Small Crafts and Harbor?
Through the Chair, no, it, it would have to meet the specs before any payments made. Just to be clear that there has been no payments made at this point at all. There's no money down, so he's building this on spec.
Thank you Counselor LaChappelle. Any further con- comments or questions? Seeing none, call for the vote, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, I turn the floor back to you.
Thanks Counselor Raymond and uh, well done to staff on their reports. Uh, item six, Operational Services, uh, I'll turn it over to Counselor Larmont.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, we have item six point one, OS two-thousand-twenty-five dash thirteen, General Manager Operational Services. Manager of Engineering Services, Remonthly Activity Report for June to August two-thousand-twenty-five. Um, I have a recommendation moved by Counselor Talbot and seconded by Counselor Baumstead that reads that item OS two-thousand-twenty-five dash thirteen dated September tenth, two-thousand-twenty-five, regarding the Monthly Activity Report Operational Services, June, July and August two-thousand-twenty-five be received. Mr. Barryo, do you have anything you'd like to add to your report at this time?
Not at this time, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will now open the floor to members of council for any comments. And seeing none, um, I'll now uh, call for the vote, all those in favor? Motion carried, thank you.
Thanks Counselor Larmont, well done, that was quick. Kudos to, uh, you know, our operational service staff, uh, they've been having one heck of a busy uh, season here, so things are looking good. Uh, item seven, Corporate Services, I'll turn it to Counselor Baumstead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Item seven point one, CS dash twenty-two-five dash zero-five-eight. Municipal Clerk, Library CEO, Re-Council Composition Review for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty term. Deferred from June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five council meeting. Uh, prior to making the motion and uh, reading the recommendation, um, I'm going to open the floor for discussion. Um, as we are to choose an option. So firstly, I would like to ask the clerk, um, if she has anything further to add to her very comprehensive report that we were pro- provided with.
Thank you Counselor Baumstead, so, um, as you'll recor- as you'll recall, this was brought forward in June originally. Um, and it was requested that I bring it back to this meeting. Um, and the original request to review, uh, council composition came, um, out of the March Committee of the whole meeting. Um, as well as to review the role of the Deputy Mayor. Um, so the report, as you know, um, outlines four options, option one being to remain status quo. Option two, to ma- maintain a seven-member council but eliminate the role of the Deputy Mayor. Option three, to reduce to a five-member council and maintain the role of Deputy Mayor. And option four, which would be to reduce to a five-member council, um, and to eliminate the role of the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Council, questions, comments? Go ahead, uh, Counselor LaChappelle.
Yeah, thanks to the Chair, and I've given this much consideration over the last week just going. And I looked at what has occurred in the municipality over those last two terms and the changes that we made in, you know, the progress that we've had and I do compliment, uh, where we are as far as efficiency, respect by the community and whatnot and and I'd like to see that continue on, and we do have some diversity with the three municipalities, I would say, like between Wabashin Port, Dory Harbor, even the rural. So my position is the status quo. Uh, for one more term, I, I do like where, where we're going. I don't think there's a need at this point to reduce. So I would support the option one where we remain status quo, I like the idea of the Deputy Mayor's role, the Mayor's role and everybody else, so I will stick with that and uh, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Raymond, please.
Thank you, through the Chair, uh, much like Counselor LaChappelle, I've also put a lot of thought into this, I'm I've always been a, a huge advocate of wondering whether we should retain the Deputy Mayor, uh, position in council, um. I'm a little confused when I look at the status of the, uh, County of Simcoe, whether it will actually go through. Uh, as we're still awaiting, um, some consent, I believe. Perhaps, uh, Deputy Mayor or His Worship could, uh, just bring us up to date on that, but having said that, um, I think that even if they do go ahead and reduce, I think that for the first term, we should stay status quo only because that's exactly how we operate and I'm sure the county is going to be throwing all kinds of changes our way. And we're not sure what to expect, um, this can be reused, visited again uh, following the next term if it passes, remaining status quo, so. Um, that's what I would go for is just leave it for this next term and see how the, uh, County Council, you know, winds up, thank you.
Thank you Counselor Raymond, any further comments? Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks Counselor Baumstead and, um, I'm still of the opinion option three is still the best, uh, moving forward to, for our residents, uh. I think, uh, just with the way, uh, the political world is going right now, it's, uh, it's tough to get politicians, um. I think dropping to five will open it for residents to do their due diligence and selecting individuals to represent the whole municipality, I think as, uh, Counselor LaChappelle alluded to way back when amalgamation did take place. There was four distinct, uh, uh, communities that, uh, we didn't need the ward system and, uh, substantial number of, uh, um, counselors to represent each of those things. I think we have come over the last, you know, almost thirty, forty years or, uh, whatever it is. Uh, the councils of the day have brought that all together, so we're one community at this point. Uh, we, we all represent just the one community or as it is. Um, just to answer, uh, Counselor Raymond's question about the county, uh, the letter has been sent to the minister to intervene, to drop it to sixteen. Uh, nothing's been heard back as of yet. Um, where, I don't have no crystal ball where we're going down the road, whether there will be future amalgamations, I can't be a hundred percent sure. Um, should it go to sixteen, uh, again, it would be the mayor, um. The Deputy Mayor's position, um. Council could, uh, flip to, uh, selecting it in the house, uh, and drop the Deputy Mayor. I guess I look at the, the point. If, uh, we maintain the Deputy Mayor, uh, that role would, uh, cover the, uh, Mayor in his absence at the county, that way the residents do get to elect, uh, that representative, so. That's how I see it, I'm still, like I say, option three is still the best, uh, going forward in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, uh, Counselor Talbot, please.
Thank you through the Chair, um, I, I have a tendency to lean towards option two. Um, I think that, uh, the Deputy Mayor position could be eliminated. And much like Ora Madonte, what happens there is, um, one of the counselors steps in to, uh, to be part of that role of the, of the Deputy Mayor, so I think, um, you know, it gives, uh, you know, the counselors, if they, you know, want to be part of that, an opportunity to grow and, uh, and, um, see how, you know, that role can expand in the Mayor's absence or, you know, to help with, uh, you know, activities that, you know, the Mayor is unable to go to. Um, I just think it's a, it's an opportunity for growth and, um, it would, yeah, it's just, uh, a good thing, it would be cost-saving. I'm not sure how, how much it would be a cost-saving, but, um, yeah, otherwise I'm with option one. Um, I, I think that what we have works. I think you need to have different, um, you know, people to, to bring forth a good working relationship. Which I really think this council provides to, uh, to the residents of Tay Township, but anyway, uh, that's my little add-on, thank you.
Thank you Counselor Talbot, uh, Counselor Larmont, please.
Thank you, um, so I tend to agree that, that the seven-member council works very well, this of course is my first term on council, it's a, to me, it's a huge learning curve for the first term. Um, especially looking at coming into an election year next year. I mean, what would, what would happen if we went down to a five-member council? And there were four new members of council voted in, it wouldn't be the knowledge there. Um, so I think on that point as well, it, it's, it's a good idea to stay with seven-member council, thank you.
Thank you Counselor Larmont, any further questions or go, go ahead Mayor Walker.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, um. If you had asked me this question a year ago, I would have said go to five. However, with, uh, some of the changing, uh, things and I, I've given it a lot of thought as well. Um, I just think at this time, this particular time, five-member council would be too small. Uh, bearing in mind the, um, strong mayor powers and I'm still not certain what's behind that, that the five-member councils are excluded from the strong mayor powers for some reason. I'm not quite sure what that reason is, so it makes me a little bit suspicious. Um. The other thing I thought about is that we don't have wards anymore and I think by staying at seven, there's a better chance that we're going to get more township-wide representation. Uh, that gets two more positions out there. That could be people from, say, the rural area or Wabashin or uh, Waverley or wherever, but, um, if it was five, might, might not get a chance. Um. The Deputy Mayor position, uh, I feel is necessary. Um, the amount of time now for meetings and, uh, uh, functions, et cetera, is really, um, has really increased. Uh, this summer, for example, used to, summer used to be pretty quiet, but this summer's been really busy with different functions. And I always feel that if you're invited to something, you should attend, be, um, attend, so. And sometimes it's just not possible, so it's much easier to have one person to go to rather than doing a, um, computer survey as to, okay, uh, you guys, who's available to do this, uh, on this certain date? Uh, just be one more thing that you'd have to do and sometimes it's, it's quick, you get an invite for something on Monday and you get an invite that it's going to be Wednesday night, so, um. It, it's much better from that perspective, if there's no Deputy Mayor, as Counselor Talbot mentioned, then I think it would be necessary to designate somebody, um, in that regard, if it's not an elected position, it should be an appointed position, at least for one year. Um, Ora Madonte is, as, uh, Counselor Talbot mentioned, have used that system, but they were going to change it halfway through the term, but, but they haven't. So I think they're finding that, um, that position's, uh, necessary and the person that's in there has two years' experience, so that's, that's carry on with it. Um, the other thing I think that we should be concentrating on a little bit is orientation for new council members. For people who haven't decided yet whether they want to run. And I think staff are working on that and that's going to be part of our, our open house, uh, material available is to let people know that it's not just council meetings that you're expected to attend. But there are a lot of functions and it's much better if there's a good turnout at, at some of these functions than, than just myself or or one other member, it just looks much better if there, there's a group of council represented at that meeting, so. That helps people decide from a timing perspective, do they actually have the time to, to be able to commit? So having said all that, I, I think for this year's status quo is, or for the next term's status quo is the best option. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Counselor LaChappelle.
Thank you, Sir Chair. I know that Counselor Bumstead, you haven't had an opportunity to put your foot forward, but I would suggest that when we do, I would put a motion forward on behalf of this council that we accept option one.
Thank you. Anyway, are we all in agreement for option one or any opposition to option one?
Do you need a second or Counselor Bumstead?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page for the option. So I'll go ahead now. It looks like option one is the choice. So I'll go ahead and read the, make the motion and read the recommendation. So I have a motion moved by Counselor Larmont, seconded by Counselor LaChappelle, that item CS-2025-058 dated September 10th, 2025 regarding council composition, 2026, 2030 term be received, and that council selects option number one as outlined in item CS-2025-058, and that subject to the option chosen above, staff be directed to bring forward the related bylaw at an upcoming meeting of council for consideration. Okay, everyone in agreement to that motion? We have motion carried and we do have an opposition by Deputy Mayor Norris. Thank you. Moving on to item 7.2, CS-2025-043, Executive Assistant Reproposed Tait Volunteer Recognition Award Program. I have a motion moved by Counselor Raymond, seconded by Mayor Walker, that reads that item CS-2025-043 dated September 10th, 2025 regarding the creation of a formal policy for the Tait Volunteer Recognition Award Policy be received, and that council approve the implementation of the Tait Volunteer Recognition Award Policy as outlined in Schedule I to this item. Denise, do you have anything further to add to that report?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council? Mayor Walker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There, I don't think there's been any significant changes to the policy hazard or is there something that we identified that we've incorporated in this one?
There's nothing significant other than the cha, the name of the award. It changed from the Tait Volunteer Recognition Award. It was formerly known as the Citizen of the Year Award. And then really, it's just a formal policy with a consistent framework. So nothing major.
Good. If I might have a follow-up, Madam Chair. I understand that the one criteria is that they can't be, or they have to be a Tait Township resident. I'm just wondering if there shouldn't be some form of an exception there that, in exceptional circumstances, I'm just thinking that somebody could live on the border, for example. I'm thinking of our Legion, so somebody lives in Severn, but they attend the Wabacheen Legion and they're a great volunteer, a great contribution to Tait Township. Is there some way we could incorporate that? Or is that just opening up too mu, too many problems?
Counselor Raymond, please.
Thank you through the chair. Your worship, that's a very good point. We know few volunteers that don't live within Tait Township, and they contribute immensely to some of the things that get done in the township. So, you know, my, where they live, to me, is not near as important as what they offer to the township. So if there is a way to frame it as such, I think that would probably be bang on for what we would consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Raymond. Counselor LaChappelle.
Yes, through the chair, I was going to ask you what Counselor Raymond said and Mayor Walker. We got to take, for example, we go to a person that was in Portmanico Alliance Club, what that individual contributes to the Portmanicoan area functions that she tends, and she's not a resident, so I think there's some merit to what Mayor Walker suggested. If there's a way around it, I think we should consider it because I know that individual is very, very strong in our community as far as doing things. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor LaChappelle. Perhaps we could look at maybe some rewording to include that scenario?
Thank you, Chair. I could do that.
Thank you. Okay, I will now call the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. 7.3, CS-2025-064, Manager of Communications and Technology Service, Regarding Monthly Activity Report for June, August 2025. I have a motion moved by Counselor Larmont, seconded by Deputy Mayor Norris, that reads that item CS-2025-064 dated September 10th, 2025 regarding the monthly activity report, communications and technology services, June, July, and August 2025 be received. Elizabeth, do you have any further, anything further to add to your report?
Nothing further to add at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Item 7.4, CS-2025-063, Deputy Treasurer, Re-Monthly Activity Report, June, August 2025. I have a motion moved by Counselor Raymond, seconded by Counselor Talbot, that reads that item CS-2025-063 dated September 10th, 2025 regarding the monthly activity report, financial services, June, July, and August be received. Is Rebecca with us?
No, Rebecca's out of the office.
Do you have anything further to add, Emmy?
There's nothing further to add, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Item 7.5, CS-2025-062, Municipal Clerk, Library CEO, Re-Monthly Activity Report for June, August 2025. I have a motion moved by Mayor Walker, seconded by Deputy Mayor Norris, that item CS-2025-062 dated September 10th, 2025 regarding the monthly activity report, Legislative Services, June, July, and August be received. Does the clerk have anything further to add?
Thank you, Counselor Bumstead. Nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. 7.6, CS-2025-061, CAO Deputy Clerk, Re-Monthly Activity Report, June, August 2025. I have a motion moved by Counselor LaChappelle, seconded by Counselor Talbot, that item CS-2025-061 dated September 10th, 2025 regarding the monthly activity report, CAO Deputy Clerk, June, July, and August 2025 be received. Does the CAO have anything further to add?
Thank you, Chair Bumstead. Nothing further at this point, but here for questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor Bumstead. Well done. And all the content that were in the staffing reports were great. So that moves us on to item eight, Other Business. 8.1 is a verbal update for myself on the Severn Sound Environmental Association 2026 Budget Request. Basically, the board sent it back to, you know, the board members to bring it up at the local councils. In a nutshell, there was major discussion on the budget. It was a little compli, little more complicated this year, with Georgian Bay indicating that they are pulling out of the association at the, by the end of this year. They had to revamp because it is possible Georgian Bay may remain. Saying that Georgian Bay's, Georgian Bay's main reason was to do an internal audit as the number of lakes they actually have. So saying all that, the board approved what we're saying is option four. However, before we get into that, if the eight partners remain, it would be a 2.2% increase. Now, where it gets a little dicey here and the, the board looked at different options. If we do drop down to seven partners, it will be an increase of 3%, which is option four on page 100. Saying that, where we're looking at, if Georgian Bay does drop out, it'll mean a 12.5% increase across the board. In other words, for us, it'd be a $4,000 increase. So the board has chosen option four, which is a 3% increase. Saying that, what we're doing is taking the remaining monies out of reserves and you're basically looking at 3% plus in the future budgets to make up that difference should Georgian Bay remain out. So that's kind of quickly about it. Hopefully I made some sense to council. I can entertain a question here. Counselor LaChappelle. Yeah, through the chair, as we always seem to want to evaluate these expenses that we keep occurring through all these added committees that we are a part of. And as you know, my position on the Severn Sound, I'm curious and still wondering 100% of their, what they produce or offer to us or we, we are required. I mean, anytime they're asked for an increase, I have my doubts. They keep growing bigger and bigger and bigger. I know some of you are going to argue there's some value. Yeah, is it worth what we pay as a value? We never really assess on it. We've talked about it. And I looked at it the other day and went through it. And it's a lot of things that, yeah, we make, we receive info from, but a majority we don't. So I don't know where to go with this. I, I'm just having difficulty keep spending and spending and spending and spending in this department. We didn't seem to have a problem with eliminating other ones. And I think what happens is at some point, we really, really got to dive into this, this organization and find out what's valued to us. Is it worth the money that we pay for what we get out of it? So I, I mean, now I'm, I don't know where I'm at with the status quo with the increases or whatever I'm at, but I'm just lost in words of how we keep expanding, expanding, growing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor LaChappelle. Mayor Walker? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just further to Counselor LaChappelle's comments. I too have, have concerns and I have for some time. Although the budget annual requests seemingly are more in line with what we expected before, close to what we would be asking our residents for. I think the big concern is if Georgian Bay does opt out, that changes the whole ballgame as far as I'm concerned as to whether we can afford to stay. The other thing that really puzzles me is I know that they just did a, they're doing a study on, at our request, on the allocation formula and also on the memorandum of understanding. You know, they hired a consultant. I don't know what the final cost was, but I expect it's going to be about $50,000. Meanwhile, each municipality has a very qualified treasurer. I think that that, as a group, could have got together and looked at a funding formula that would have made sense. With respect to the memorandum of understanding, each member municipality has a qualified CAO, which could have sat down and come up with a good MOU with, with help from the various clerks that we have. All very qualified people. So why the association felt it necessary to spend that money on a study when they know very well they're going to be into some financial hits from Georgian Bay leaving? Those funds could have been used to offset that Georgian Bay leaving for a number of years. I, I just can't figure it out why they would make a decision to spend the money in that way when we have qualified people in each municipality that could have got together and done the same thing. I think Mayor McDonald of Midland used to say, it's like a consultant is like boring somebody's watch to tell them what time it is. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. Anyway, though, that's my, my position on the matter. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Walker. Counselor Raymond?
Thank you through the chair, and I do echo Counselor LaChappelle on your worship's comments. My concern is that as, as the membership whittles away, do we continue to pick up the costs? Where my expectation, it may be wrong. My expectation is that there should be a reduction in services to accommodate the, the available revenue and not just arbitrarily increase the revenue to the remaining partners. Georgian Bay is a, a smaller portion of the contributors. What happens if one of the larger ones decide that they're going to bring it in-house or, and then all of a sudden we're left with, well, yeah, here's what your increase could be, but you can apply and exit in two years, you know, at the higher rates. So, you know, to me, this is a bit of a warning shot. If, if we need to really consider what the future of the SSEA is, the value it brings to our residents, and, you know, perhaps the watershed as a whole. But at the end of the day, we are still responsible to our residents for the money that we pay out. And we just have to make sure that we fully understand when the money goes out, what we're getting for value. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Raymond. Counselor LaChappelle, a follow-up?
Yes, through the chair, and, and I think where we're going is, is for me is interesting in the fact that, I, you know, where does this actually end as far as people, the moving parts of this thing? And I, and that's Counselor Raymond, the big person goes, you know, we, we have a responsibility or like how the buyout is could be here or two, whatever type of thing. But I always wonder, and we never really did, I know we talked about this, exactly break down from point A, B, C, D, down what is part of the SSE that we utilize. And I guarantee you, it does not come close to what the value that we're going to pay. And, and my fear is, as Counselor Raymond said, if people keep dropping out, but at some point, we need to do a closer evaluation of what's in part of the SSE and what we utilize. I understand we use some of it, but we also pay for some of it. So I, I don't know where this is going. It's just to me, it's an organization that keeps growing. And, and I go back to the original part, and you, you, one deputy mayor, have always said, to me, this is an organization where the government had downsized. They used to do 100% of this SSE when Keith Sherman was there, my understanding. All of a sudden, now it comes to us and it keeps growing and growing and growing. The costs keep growing and growing and growing. Where's our venture government and federal government with all this stuff like, what's their contribution? And, and once again, we as small municipalities are left with the burden to carry such these projects. Plus, when they keep growing, and that's what bothers me, the, where's the end of our, 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 the requests and demands?
Thanks, Counselor LaChappelle. Counselor Bumstead?
Um, yes, thank you through the chair. I would just be curious to know from our planning department, how many time, you know, what is the frequency of them needing to reach out to the SSE? You know, how many times? You know, uh, how many times a year, how many, you know, and? Does the planning department, our planning department uh feel the necessity? To have input from this organization? So that, you know, I was just curious about that. That may help us. Look ahead at uh what to do about this. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Bumstead. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor. I'm I'm in, I agree with each and every councillor um that has spoken thus far, but. In regards to um, yeah, what services do we use? And what's the price tag associated with those? And like councillor Bumstead, how many times have we used the planning? You know, that we see the report from S S C A. My thing is it keeps growing and so does their staff. And you know, um. You know, are we paying more for staffing in the sense like that happens often? But in in regards to what services we're receiving. So I would like some kind of breakup uh of that. And board members, you know, how off, I I don't know how often the board meets, but I'm sure they all get paid well. So. You know, how much uh like that kind of breakup in the spending to me is important. So um, just food for thought. Uh, anyway, thank you.
Thanks councillor Talbot. Um. Yeah, I can quickly respond to a couple of the uh. Comments um. Just on, I'll start because I remember what councillor Talbot just said. So. The the board does meet for possibly five times a year. Uh, the board. Is made up of uh the partners, so there is no uh financial uh. Uh expenditures on that uh. Just on uh. Councillor Lashapell, when he referred to the uh. Uh, Mr. Sherman, when he ran the S S, you're right, you, it was all provincial funding back then, but the mandate of. Of the organization was to carry forth and uh that was made up of the eight. Originally nine partners, so. Um, saying that um, we did do an in-depth uh study on S S C A. Uh, I believe that's a year and a half ago, staff did a. A full analysis of it, uh, which was brought back to uh council. Um, we did at that point in time decide to uh stay. However, there was a caveat in which. We had put forward to the partners that we wanted the funding formula and the letter of agreement to update it. Um, I'll get into that in a second because I do have another verbal on that uh. So saying all of that, uh, I think the question to do with the planning department was answered with when they did do the in-depth. On it um. Wouldn't be a character, but I don't believe there was uh. Uh, we did use the um S S C A continually. We do. Ask them for um on all zoning applications or planning applications if there is any comments which they respond. So seeing that uh, since there is no other uh. Questions in relation to. Oop, Mayor Walker.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. Sorry about that, but just in the discussions. You know, and I talk about this study that they're doing on the allocation. I just think. They would be more. It would be more beneficial for them to do a study as to what each municipality needs from them. And then as per that study. They can decide on what services are going to provide, what the cost is going to be. And then allocate that on a user pay basis. Rather than the um amount of area. The what Keith Sherman did with that organization. As it started out. But it seems to me that rather than just doing the protection of the deed listing. The organization keeps taking on more and more. Uh, call it duties um. To uh provide, which does not come back to the municipalities for us to say, yeah, we do want that service. So by doing that, they allocate those costs to all the municipalities rather than the few municipalities who may want it. And I'm not saying they don't provide good services, but um, there should be a shopping list. And we have the opportunity to purchase what we need and other municipalities would have that same option. And then the S S A could decide on what their staffing levels and so on are to meet those needs. Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor.
Thanks Mayor Walker. Maybe I can answer some of those questions in my next report on uh S S C A. So I'm not seeing any other direct questions related to the uh. The increases this year, so we will receive that as information. I'll just check with the clerk. We're good with that. Okay, thanks Katie. Okay, the next item is uh, oh my me. I only got my one screen up here uh is another verbal report and that's uh just an update on the uh. The direction uh. Uh, the board has taken in relation to uh. What uh Mayor Walker was referring to. Um, we initially. Sent out a letter to the various partners requesting. That uh. A funding formal review be done and an update to the letter of agreement. Um, we did not get uh the required uh. Uh, response back to forward that uh Severn Township hadn't turned around and. Redirected this back to the S S C A board in which uh. They wanted additional uh areas looked at uh through a third party uh. Um consultant. So. We did bring this up at the board meeting. Um. What was brought to the board was uh. Uh, Strategy Corp at a cost of seventy eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, would be able to deliver a vision and mandate review and verification. Service inventory, the funding formula, review and proposed revisions, letter of agreement reviewed. And proposed revisions, cost comparison report, including comparison to conserva- conservation authorities. Now saying all that, that would go back to what the mayor turned around indicated um. When we get back into what each of the municipalities uh. May have been looking for, that would have. Been covered in basically the, say, the vision and the mandate. However. What the board looked at was the overall cost. Um, there was three options that were put to the board. Um. That option one was that it would go back to the eight municipalities and uh they cover the costs of of the uh. Of the report. Uh, the second part was a fifty fifty split in which they would re. Use reserves. Uh, the third part was to turn around and uh. Fund the uh, the report out of reserves. Uh. The board did decide to uh. Uh, funded out of reserves, however. Uh, when it got into the final discussions. The two main areas that uh. Uh, we looked at, and that is to do with the funding formula or review and a proposed and the letter of. Of agreement for a review. With direction that we would only get the consultant to look at. Those two items and to look for a reduction in the cost now. What uh I haven't been updated as to what that final costing is, uh, was left with. The CEO to turn around, negotiate the the best price to turn around and have that consultant to. Mandate these two uh areas. Um, the only update is that uh the consultant is. To bring it back at the uh. Uh, I believe it's the October meeting. Um, which is in relation to try and get the this before Georgian Bay before the end of the year. So saying all that, that's where we're at. Um. Now, I know we did have some tidbits when we get back into what what is really going on. We do know the ministry is reviewing this. Uh, there was even a bit of scuttlebutt down even at AMO about this. Uh. We don't know what the ministry is looking at. I believe there's thirty six. Different conservation authorities, organizations within the province. Uh, looking after this. In reality, when we talk about watersheds, there's three main watersheds. Uh. Secondary, I believe there's thirty different watersheds. So whether the ministry is looking at turn around revamping the whole thing, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Uh, but it is supposed to be coming. Uh, towards us soon, so. So saying all that, um, that's where we're we're at for um. You know, the uh. The update on this, um. Not sure if any members of council have any questions in relation to it, but uh. Happy to turn around and do my best to try and answer them. Not, not seeing any, so I think what we'll do, we'll just research, see this as information and. The other part, I do believe uh the consultant will be reaching out to the treasurer and the CEO for. For comments um. If they haven't already, so I'm not too sure if Andrea has anything, any further update to.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, nothing further. Uh, in the email that we received from S S S S E A. Um, CEO, uh, it indicated that they may be reaching out, but I certainly haven't heard from them and I'm unsure if uh our treasurer has either.
Great. Thanks Andrea. Uh, Mayor Walker.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. Just one final uh comment. Isn't it interesting that the consultant is going, finds it necessary to reach out to the C A Os and the treasurers? Thank you.
Thanks Mayor Walker, and I think that's been my argument all along. Uh, I did try and uh. Revamp that, so anyway. What's done is done. We'll see what the uh. End result ends up with. So we'll receive that for information. See Katie giving us the nod. Uh, items for information we have done brings us to ten delegation follow-up, ten point one. Any comments from council? Um, can't speak for all of council. Um. As a follow-up, uh, I do appreciate the fact that uh Kate has. Brought an awareness to this. Uh, we can receive it as information. Uh. I'm just not quite sure uh where we're going for the funding. Uh, we could advocate a letter to the ministry and uh the upper tier governments to support uh funding, but. I see Mayor Walker may have a suggestion. Mayor.
Uh, not not so much a suggestion. I think this just goes to budget. Uh. Again, it's it's a a a high amount for us to consider, especially on an annual basis. Uh. And I I again, I just keep talking about duplication of services. Um. And I don't think we need to advocate on their behalf to the province either. I think that's up to them to advocate to the province. I don't think we need to. Uh, step in um at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. So the suggestion is here to pass it to the budget and look at it there, or do we even? Or do we need to go that far? I guess that's my question back. So it is the wish of council to throw it to the mayor for consideration? And his budget deliberations? Hmm, that. Yeah, councillor, I got three, four, so it'll be thrown to the to the mayor. For budget consideration. You're late on the draw there, Mayor. Anyway. So that that's the way we'll proceed with this. So uh, again, thanks to Kate for bringing that up. Uh. Item eleven, general discussion, committee staff questions and answer period. Yeah, I have Mayor Walker.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, last night I received the phone call from uh Dennis Estherbrook from uh. Uh, the Sunset Post Legion in Victoria Harbor. Uh, as you know, council may know that they've been working on construction of a new deck at at their, at the facility. Uh, that work is all completed and the Legion is going to be doing an official opening and they've. Uh, asked me to invite all of council. To attend the official opening on Saturday, September twentieth. At two o'clock. So if you could mark that in your calendars, there there will be an official uh invite coming, but I thought uh. If you could mark that in your calendars now and uh. Uh, plan to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Uh, councillor Lashapell.
Yes, through the chair, I thought I had to do this under new business, but I'll speak to it now. In regards to. A proposal that uh at the last meeting uh of council, you remember that Cindy and Joe Bianco did a presentation. On behalf of the project they undertake and uh. I don't know about the rest of you, but it kind of touched me a bit and uh. You know, you don't realize how well we have it sometimes as individuals and then when you hear some of the things that happen within the municipality. It's great that we can reach out and help support it. And I'm a believer that uh this council and this group of staff that we have are very community oriented. And I did speak to the point that maybe something we could do. So I kind of explained to you, had a discussion with uh Mr. Barryo and Mr. Anderson. And what we're talking about uh is providing an opportunity for them to receive some benefits from the community in the in the way of donations. Possibly food or toys and the ideas have it called Skate with Tay on November twenty second. The two hour um undertaking and the intent is to help this organization. Chief some of the things they want to do in supporting families and kids. So what uh the intent is, is have Mr. Barryo and Mr. Anderson be the leads and I be the assistant to it. But I'm asking for council's blessings to uh proceed with this. I think worthwhile uh undertaking. And once again, showing that Tay is strong. And it gives us an opportunity once again to support the community, so. I'm asking for council's support and allow us, the three of us. To come up with some ideas, undertaking and uh. Hopefully this will be very successful, skate with Tay and to help our community. Such as briefly, if anybody has any questions with the intent, uh. We will come back, but at first I need council's directive and support of us doing this project.
Uh, just before I go, Mayor Walker.
Uh, just uh, sounds a good idea. Uh, is this just for the Port Lions uh food bank?
No, it's actually uh just through to to the chair. I I think it was my intent, uh, your worship was with with the um. I I was assuming that Cindy and Joe do this on their own, this project. Um, to help families and uh that's a good point. Um. I I think there are other organizations, so how we ever want to address it, uh, you wears a good point. I could talk to Mr. Barry and Mr. Anderson how we do this. Uh, I was just reacting to Cindy's presentation. Thought there is an opportunity for Tay to be strong again and supporting the community, so. If there's a need to kind of incorporate like even our group here in Victoria Harbor, whatever, but uh. I just think it's a, it's a good opportunity to to be part of the community again.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I think it's a great idea and I don't have, I don't have a. Problem with it just being for that group, but it is actually through the Lions Club that they do it.
Oh, it is, eh?
And um, yeah, I don't have any problem if, I guess if we get too many involved. And then we also have the um discussion coming up at some point. Uh, about the uh, we do have some funds available uh with respect to a direct uh. Uh, grant to them that we could look at this year as well, so sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, uh councillor Raymond first.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, yeah, no, I think it's a good idea, as his worship has said. I mean, uh, anything we can do to help. Our residents uh is always a good thing. Uh, I'd be interested though, when uh you start looking into this, is just to find out. Exactly what uh, how many organizations do this kind of stuff? In Tay and for the Tay residents, you know, food banks, uh. We have a number of of groups and.
That's, yeah, be a few minutes.
Probably be a good idea if we if we get a chance to uh just find out exactly who's doing what. Uh, might help us as well, uh, support them properly. Anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Raymond. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you through the chair to councillor Lashapell. Yeah, so my understanding of how it works, I know. Thank you through the chair to Counselor Lash Chappell. Yeah, so my understanding of how it works, I know in conjunction with the Lions, but they, there's a group of gals um whom you know all of them that uh, you know, we're at the corn roast at the community center, like, so there's Cindy, there's um my sister-in-law, um and, you know, Dean Garrett's wife. And so there's about five gals altogether that work your uh Counselor Lash Chappell with toys. So if you need any connections, I can help you with that.
Yeah, just just through to uh to through the chair to everybody. Yeah, we we do have a great facility and I think having the ranks skate with Tay will prevent, will provide the opportunity for residents to come. We we know that it's well utilized that facility. And I think having it is kind of a blessing for us to do what we want to do. And basically they say it's two hours, bring something and we'll never turn anybody away, but I I think it's just, you know, if we promote it well, set it up well, and I think we, as we all know, we put a lot of trust in Mr. Barrio and Mr. Anderson to do that. With the help of our great Elizabeth through our communication part of it, I think it'd be successful. And I think the big thing, it just demonstrates once again who Tay really is. And I think, you know, we're leaders and that, and when we come to municipality, I hear it everywhere. So let's continue and I think the causes are great. And uh it just shows us that uh there's a need out there that uh, you know, all of us aren't as lucky as we are to do what we do. So so any support and if this council agrees to it, uh we will proceed and we'll provide more data and more information as we move forward so that everybody's in knowledge about it. So so that's the all I basically have.
Nice, Counselor Lash Chappell. Follow-up, Counselor Talbot.
Not quite a follow, your Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to commend uh uh Mr. Barrio on the parking lot that we have at Talbot Park today. Um they've taken down all the fencing, they've put up big rocks and uh just Sean, it looks so nice up there and the uh, what do you call that? It's not gravel anymore. You put down um some kind of
Wrap.
Pardon?
Wrap. Recycled ash, recycled asphalt.
Yeah, recycled asphalt. So if anybody gets a chance to uh go for a drive and look at it, it looks, they've done our 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 team's done a really great job in giving it a refreshed look. So I just wanted to thank you on that, uh Mr. Barrio.
Thanks, Counselor Talbot. I'll flip back. We'll finish off with uh Counselor Lash Chappell's uh request here. Uh what I'm getting is council is looking for uh for a uh a report back in regards to that. So direction will be for staff, Katie, or is that what we're looking for?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I believe the uh direction to staff would be to go forward with the event is what I'm hearing. Um and then in addition, um our treasurer is working on a report that will come back to a future meeting regarding other funding opportunities.
Okay, so I have the concurrence of council on that. And I'm seeing the majority are in agreeance. So that's great. Okay, other uh uh discussions from counselors. Not seeing any. The only one I've got is uh Team Tay does have a uh a walking group in on Sunday, so anyone wishes to donate, um by all means, reach out to the clerk on that one. We'll see uh different people at the event on Sunday at nine o'clock over in Perkinsville. So not seeing any further questions, a closed session, we have none. Um so that leads us to adjournment. So the resolution that this committee of the whole meeting adjourn at ten thirty-four A M. I have it moved by Counselor Bumstead, second by Counselor Lash Chappell, all those in favor. And that is carried. Thanks, everyone, and we'll catch everybody probably over the weekend somewhere.